It's more for discussion and we're not going to be voting on anything or just kind of get to know what's update, updates on both sides.
This meeting is being recorded.
I wonder who, I wonder who does that? All right, we'll call the meeting in order. Lisa, if you take the role.
Robert New is absent. Kevin Puller is absent. John Johnson.
Here.
Tom Shifsky is absent. Archie Vickman is absent. Brett Gary with the Business Association is absent. Tim Cole.
Here.
Terry Furlong.
Here.
John Stark. Elaine Martin.
Here.
Heather Tries.
Here.
Eric Renna. Brooke Gelber.
Here.
John Hungy.
Here.
Cameron New.
Yeah, present.
Andrew White.
Here.
And Lisa Wong.
Here.
Oh! And then we do have staff.
And then we have myself, Lisa Ritchie, and Brandy Powell with WSP.
We just need a motion, go ahead.
Morgan O'Witt.
Just motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moved.
Do we need a motion, do we?
We can second it.
Well, we're adopting the-
I mean, is it a real meeting?
First and second.
Yep.
In favor.
Aye, aye.
Pose, most curious, being over to the public, do we have anybody on Zoom at all who would like to address us?
Everyone that is on Zoom is now being promoted to a panelist, so we have John Stark has joined us, so he can present. And we also have Lisa Wong that joined us via Zoom. And that's it for participants.
Okay, we have a couple items here, and that's the sign ordinance, planning commission work plan, the former Lilly Building, and the 2579 Seventh Street. And I'll turn it over to the city manager, Stark.
Can we have Brandy start with the sign ordinance, because she has to read that six, or three, four, six, is that okay?
Perfect.
Yeah.
No, I was just going to introduce Brandy, so perfect.
Some of us have met already.
Welcome, Brandy.
Thank you.
I can get this going pretty quickly.
And maybe I could just, Cameron is new to the planning commission, so, Tim, you haven't met city council member Cole. We have Lisa Wong on Zoom, and I think you know everybody else, but this is a meeting that we just started this last year, just so that the two groups get information between each other that we're all up to date on what's going on in the city. So it's kind of a relaxed meeting, it's nothing formal, we're not going to be voting on anything, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank Cameron for making me not the newest guy in the room.
Oh, there you go. So welcome, Cameron.
Thank you. But does he know where the old ground round is?
Go ahead, Brandy.
Okay.
Don't mind those guys on that.
Thanks, everybody, for having me tonight. We'll talk about the sign ordinance, the planning commission has been working on this since October. And the reason that we've started embarking on this journey is to, one, address the Reed versus the Town of Gilbert Supreme Court case, which means that we cannot regulate content, but also to improve the clarity and simplify the ordinance, remove regulations from the definitions, to eliminate regulations that are deemed unnecessary and strengthen them as needed. So this presentation is kind of a broad overview to give you the Cliff Notes version of what's, what's been done. So what, what hasn't been changed, basically the entire thing has been reorganized and shuffled, and some of it's been dumped out completely, and then we've added a little bit of extra, but mostly it's been shrunk. But what we did keep was the way we measure sign area, how we measure sign height, the requirement that everything be set back 10 feet, at least permanent signs must be set back 10 feet from the road or curb or property line, depending on the type of sign. And then maintenance, all signs must be kept in good repair, and multi-tenant buildings must still also provide a master sign plan.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
10 feet, who, is that kind of a standard for communities?
Uh, I don't know that it's standard for communities across the board. It was in the current ordinance, and it was deemed that it was something that the planning commission wanted to keep.
It was from property line, the building, somebody's below the property line, unless I'm mistaken.
Right.
I think we made a distinction between permanent and non-permanent as far as property line issue, because permanent are, they're there, they're not easily removed, but permanent, they're non-permanent signs, you can just pick them up and get them out of the way if necessary. So that was kind of our thought process.
Forgot to turn my mic on, pardon me. Permanent-
That was our thought process.
Permanent signs on a free, like a freestanding or a monument sign, it's also good to have some sort of setback so that it's not in the sightline of, you know, vehicular traffic. So 10 feet was what it was, 10 feet is what it's going to be unless there's a change. So what did we look at, or whoops, what happened? That's not good, because it's right here. Okay. So we have the existing and the proposed ordinance side by side. So in the existing code, sign permits were required for any type of sign, permanent or temporary. We're calling temporary signs non-permanent signs in the new code. The height limits varied, you could have a 25-foot sign in the mixed-use districts or a six-foot sign in the residential districts. Dimensional standards have largely stayed the same, but the maximum that you could have in the old ordinance was up to 400 square feet in the MU3 district, and then there was no process for appeals. So in the new ordinance, we're only going to make you get a sign permit if you want a permanent sign. So if you want to put a political sign in your yard, or a banner, or a flag sign, as long as it's following the rules, you can have it. The height limitations have been changed so that they're based on the type of sign as opposed to just the district. So a post and arm sign would be five foot, monument sign eight feet, same with electric, electronic message signs, and then pylons would be up to 25 feet. The dimensional standards... Oh, I guess I'll explain this in the next slide. We also created an appeals process, which would, if somebody was unhappy with a decision by staff to deny a permit, they could then have the proposal reviewed by planning commission, and the decision would go to city council. So this is the, the slide that sort of is our attempt to simplify wits in the existing ordinance. So the stuff on the left is, that's just the MU districts, and it's not including the residential districts. And it's, there's a lot going on in terms of regulation, but from an administration standpoint, it's pretty difficult to interpret exactly what is permitted, especially if you've got multiple sign types for a, a property. The very far right-hand column in the old table is the maximum aggregate sign area based on both districts, the size of the building. So it wasn't clear if that maximum sign area was applicable to all sign types or if it was permanent, monument, wall sign, et cetera. So we, we clarified it, we cleaned it up, and the proposed ordinance, the, the maximum sign area is for either permanent signs or non-permanent signs, so based on what you have on your property. If you've got a monument and a freestanding and a wall, the combined of all of those in the MU3 district would be 300 square feet. We can come back to this if there's questions, too. So then I've got a couple of slides that kind of go in sign type by sign type. So roof signs in the old code were only permitted in the MU1 district. They were not addressed in the rules table at all, the one that we just looked at. So it was presumably that the height limit was from grade to the top of the sign. And the new code, we're allowing them in all non-residential districts, and then we're limiting it to six feet from the roof to the top of the sign. So that, we base that decision off of this love sign. Illuminated signs were not permitted in any district, internally illuminated signs in the old code. And the new code, they are allowed in non-residential districts. Monument signs were previously not permitted in the MU1 district, which is your downtown, except for civic uses. And they were allowed to go up to 25 feet in height. Under the new code, they're permitted in all non-residential, residential districts and any multifamily uses in any district, and they can be up to eight feet tall. Electronic message signs, they were defined in the old code, but there wasn't any specific regulations. So in this new ordinance, we've provided some regulations. They're permitted for any non-residential land use. There's regulations on how long the message can dwell, the brightness, and the text size. I promise, it's not COVID. And that text size is based on speed limit. Window signs, we had a lot of discussion about this one, and Newman's came up quite a bit. So the old sign, or the old code required you to get a permit, and you could only cover up to 20% of the window area. Under the new ordinance, a permit is not required for those non-permanent slash temporary window signs. And then for any window sign, either permanent or non-permanent, the maximum area would be 33% of the window area. And then neon signs, limited to 20% of window area in the old code. In the new code, they're not specifically regulated. If it's put in a window, then it would count towards your window limit. Sandwich boards, old code, you could have one per business, and it had some dimensional standards. In the new code, we have the same standards as above, but added that it must, we must keep a clear way, a walkway for, for people on the sidewalk. Feather signs weren't addressed in the old code, and in the new code, we've assigned a limit of two per site, and as long as there's 100 square feet separation between them. And then political signs.
Would you like some water?
Sorry?
Would you like some water?
I've got some, and I have a cough drop, I'm just, I'm just dying. I've got antibiotics waiting for me at home, my husband had to pick them up. Political signs, they are... Excuse me. We're treating them, and I'm going to get some water. I'm sorry, this happened last week when I was with the planning commission. Would you like to talk about political sites late?
Well, political signs are just regulated as a non-permanent sign. And so it's just a matter of where they can be put, and, you know, as long as you don't exceed, other than during a, you know, election year when the state regulation kicks in, and then they're, they're just allowed everywhere. So we don't, we haven't, one of the big things we did was eliminate signs by what they say, because you really, you can't do that. So we had political signs, you know, that's what we actually called them, there were, what other ones did we have? For-sale signs. So we, we really just tried to eliminate that whole reference to the purpose of the sign. And just, and that's why we have really essentially two major types, permanent, non-permanent. And I can't say too much more about political signs, they're just another type of non-permanent sign.
Question, on the feather sign, I know, I've seen those, and they're popping up more and more now, but to me, that's almost like a temporary sign.
It is, it's non-permanent, that's how it's regulated.
So it'll only be allowed for a certain period of time, then?
We don't set at, any actual timeframes, because that gets, to try to decide that is, it's not going to work for every type of temporary sign. And that's where you get into, you know, all of a sudden, starting to say, well, this message, you can be there two weeks, and this can be there one week. That's where cities have gotten into trouble. So what, how we regulate the temporary piece, because they aren't permanent, in many cases, they're not as substantial, you know, substantially built, is really by the maintenance piece. Because we kind of changed a bit of the maintenance section, I think, and talk a little bit more about that. They have to be maintained in good shape, and I can't, I'm not sure if you've got that on any of your slides or not.
I think that's in the handout, but it wasn't really addressed in the-
So that's how we deal with those. And feather signs are, I think, a good example of that, because I've seen some that are pretty ratty looking.
Right, right, how do we?
And those, I mean, some you can't even read the, the message anymore, well-
So how does that, how does that solve the problem?
That's an enforcement, that's an enforcement piece, so take it down or fix it.
Okay. Good.
Thank you. And then finally, the last slide is billboard signs. They were prohibited before, they continue to be, same with the rotating sign, inflatable sign.
Can you go back real quick?
Those are the, the few signs that we have as prohibited, not per, not permitted anywhere. If somebody has questions, I mean, what's on there is the billboard signs, which isn't new, rotating signs, inflatable signs, with the exception of seasonal decorations, and we don't say holiday, we say seasonal decorations. Lots of seasons in a year.
Yep.
Fishing season.
Fishing season signs.
And then off-premises signs, which is essentially a smaller version of a billboard. So those are the ones that are not permitted in any district. That's the proposal, anyway.
Do you think billboard signs along 36, because we have such a short corridor, is kind of the reason why we don't have that?
Yeah, the state, you know, has their right of way, because it's a state highway, and they don't allow, I mean, they have a regulation about billboards along state highways. So I think that it's just one of those, I don't even know we could fit anything within that.
So my, my example would be the McKnight Field, and we've got the baseball sign, batting cage sign.
Well, a billboard, no, a billboard isn't identifying, a billboard is essentially something that's up there to, it's an advertising-type sign, and the way it's defined is essentially, it's a sign put up to lease space for others to put their message on it. So that's what a billboard sign is, it's not identifying this location.
So batting cages is away from there, it's advertising batting cages.
Yeah, exactly, it's, it's an onsite, essentially, sign.
Onsite?
I think, I mean, I'm not exactly sure which one you're talking about, I guess I've not paid that much attention.
Triple Crown, you know, to me, that's, to me, that's kind of offsite, because it's on the McKnight Field. I'm just thinking, is that, is that potential for us to get some revenue? I'm thinking on the EDA side, can we have a spot there, because it looks on the Highway 36?
Oh, you're talking about putting something on that sign?
On that spot.
You know, what we have to, maybe staff can verify, I mean, that is on city property?
It's on city property.
Okay. And what would you want to put on it?
Target, restaurant, downtown, who knows?
Something to think about, that's-
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any specific.
That's getting into using it for advertising, if it's revenue generating. So, and if the city can do that, why couldn't a private company?
Right.
That's where you get into the difficulty with the sign regulation piece. If it's important enough that you're going to regulate it, and then you exempt the city, then it's not that important. To regulate it, let everybody do it.
I'm just looking for revenue. And that could go to McKnight Fields or whatever, I mean, it's a possibility.
Is Triple Crown part of the city, or is that just private?
It's... Yes.
Yeah, the one thing, I think the, all of the rulings, and there's even a recent one that was mentioned at the planning commission meeting last week, one for the city of Buffalo, where they just lost a case regarding signs in the circuit court here in Minnesota. Buffalo doesn't know if it's going to appeal, I doubt it will. That's why it just gets, you just have to be cautious in-
Right.
-exempting certain types of entities or speech, so to speak.
I think it's good, I don't want to dwell too much on it.
Yeah.
But it, but it looks, looks real good.
I just have one more question, and it may have been covered, and I missed it, so my apologies. It kind of falls under the, we don't, you don't call them political signs anymore, they're just signs. Small signs advertising businesses. Where is there, you know, hockey rink building, wand-lying, snow removal hole that are randomly put up, may or may not be put up with the permission of the homeowner's land in which they're on?
Well, they need to be put up with the permission of the landowner, that's number one. And number two, it's just a type of temporary, non-permanent sign.
So they're cool, there's no problem with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the homeowner could pull it out any time they want.
I do have one more quick question. Window World, they, because of the low proximity of the building in Highway 36, they wanted to go up higher, can they do a variance then for a sign ordinance?
They can apply for a variance.
I mean, I think we gave them one?
That was, what, Willcraft? Remember Willcraft? That was years and years ago.
Well, same thing, yep, so they moved, but now Window World is there, and they wanted, so that the sign could be more visible on Highway 36, because when you came into town, the old hardware store was kind of lower, and they needed to go higher than the 25 feet. But if they can do a variance for a circumstance, that would allow them to go higher?
I don't think we have variance included in the ordinance, in the sign ordinance, but there is an appeal process.
Well, and they're also, in the sign ordinance language, and we'll clarify this at the next planning commission meeting, just to make sure it's clear, is that the code, the new sign ordinance will be administered and enforced based upon the zoning code. And in, the variance process is in the administrative portion of the zoning code. So if it's available for a normal zoning-type issue, then it probably, I think it needs to be for signs. And I remember that case very well, because it was very unique, and I recall that decision, too, because we, there was a lot of discussion about it.
Right.
Brandy and I can check into it. I don't know, in my experience, that there'd be a variance from the sign code. Like, like was mentioned, that would be more of an appeal, but we'll check into that and make sure we, we get that. And I suspect that, in the context of a planned unit development, somebody could vary from the regulations in that context, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd have to check to see what the code allows for flexibilities for PUDs, it's possible, though.
I will, hey, Brandy, you're all done?
With that one.
Thank you.
All right, so for the planning commission work plan, I'm going to-
Could I just say, too, if anybody thinks of anything prior to, you know, our next meeting, the next planning commission meeting, just shoot it off to Brandy if you have any concerns that pop into your head or any additional comments.
Yeah, speaking of the next meeting, so the, the plan is to, the, the ordinance in its entirety was given to the planning commission for one final, good, close, fine-tooth comb review. We'll take it to them on June 2nd in ordinance form, and then also whatever other chapters within the zoning code that might conflict, we'll address that at that time, too. And then it will come, so it'll be a pub, no, that's your final review. Then the public hearing will be the following month, and then it'll come to you in July, probably, to the city council.
All right, the next item is the planning commission work plan, and that, again, is going to be city planner Brandy Howe, that was going to be presenting that for us.
Is your mic on?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so as Brandy had already indicated, we've been working on the sign ordinance update. And the next thing, we've also been working on the downtown furnishings. I believe the city council already viewed that in a workshop, and we'll be coming back with pretty much the same thing that you had already seen during the workshop. The planning commission agreed with what was on there, we'd like to make a recommendation. We're certainly not going to enforce code on what they have, have and cannot have down there. But we want it to be something that's going to be sturdy, commercial-grade, well-maintained. It will be up to the property owners, the business owners, to purchase, store, and repair anything that needs to be done on that. The next item that we're going to be looking at is the downtown parklets, and there's been discussion on this subject with many different commissions and authorities. So it's, it's a hot topic right now. We haven't, other than just kind of touched the surface on that, we haven't spent a lot of time on that yet. Lisa Wong was able to provide some very valuable brochures and pamphlets on what other cities are doing. So we'll probably reference that. And then, one thing I want to point out with that is, that, again, is going to be up to the businesses if they would like a parklet, or not, not the parklet, but the, the downtown, like the restaurants, like you would see in downtown Minneapolis, where the restaurant can extend their business outside. And then that would be up to the business owners if they would like to have that and furnish it. And that's how the city of Minneapolis is maintaining that. Any comments on that?
Well, I would just add to that, the city council kind of ventured into some of this at their last meeting, and since that time, the city attorneys cautioned me a little bit about this issue- bit about this issue of these outdoor seating areas needing to be contiguous to the business, and so that, I don't think we have an answer to that, so it's just kind of an outstanding issue.
So for moving forward on our planning projects, we have a zoning map update to become compliance with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I know Brandy and Elaine have had conversations a little bit more in-depth on that, is there anything that either of you want to comment on?
Yeah, no further updates on that one, quite yet.
Okay, subdivision ordinance amendment, I'm not real familiar with that one, but...
I think I can do it.
Okay.
The subdivision ordinance is something that staff and the city attorney have kind of come to the conclusion that it's, it doesn't address certain aspects of subdivisions, for example, minor subdivisions have to go through the plating process, which is onerous for property owners. If you'll recall, from City Council, November, December, we had that Burwold addition that was kind of just a replat that had to go through the process of the prelim and final plat process. So it's kind of a cleanup thing, modernizing it, and just making sure that it's a little bit more streamlined. The CIP review for comprehensive compliance, that was added by staff, too, and that's basically just to be in conformance with statutory requirements, and give the Plan Commission an opportunity to make sure that the CIP complies with the comprehensive plan. Off-street parking, oh, wayfinding plans down here.
Oh.
Oh, interesting.
Priorities change.
The off-street parking requirements is something else that the Plan Commission has come, decided they'd like to take a look at, to see if what we have in the code is appropriate in terms of the amount of parking required for different uses, so that'll come forward. Short-term rental requirements, that was addressed, although it sounds like they, there's a person on staff, who was that?
Brent Fixon.
Brent Fixon?
Yes.
He indicated that those are currently handled as single-family residences, and so, yeah, we'll have to take a closer look in terms of, what is the prevalence of this in North St. Paul, and how do we want to handle Airbnbs and the like? Sidewalk and bicycle and pedestrian plan would be coming shortly thereafter, as well as the wayfinding plan and downtown design guideline update. So the wayfinding plan is a project that had been picked up by City Council probably in 2015, maybe? And then the first phase or two was approved and implemented, and so now it is the Plan Commission and other community member, and I believe the Park Board also kind of are looking to pick up the momentum on that, back on that, and get some additional signage installed in the downtown and other areas of the community. And so the, sorry?
Well, I would just add to the wayfinding plan, I think as we've started looking at park signage, it seems that whatever we do with our park signage should be consistent with whatever's in the wayfinding plan. So the wayfinding plan, in addition to wayfinding signs, is really about public signs in general, and how they can, how we can have some consistency in our branding in that way as well.
And so the final project, and it's quite likely that most of, or a lot of these will bleed into 2023, is the Downtown Design Guidelines, so that document has been around since, sorry? 2005, so a good while, once we have the...
Oh, time goes by when you're having fun.
Yeah, so there's a couple of projects going on that's going to impact that, the Downtown Revitalization Master Plan, the task force with EDA members are wrapping that up, and we're going to be bringing it forward to a few bodies in June, I think. But there are recommendations in there that might conflict with the Downtown Design Guidelines. I know for a fact that the sign ordinance, as we update that, will have some conflicting requirements, so that will need to be looked at again as well. So that is the work plan for 2022 and beyond.
Very good, thank you. Any questions?
Which ones don't you want us to do?
You're going to be busy.
One question that I would have, as far as the Downtown Design Guidelines, I know when we started doing the redevelopment master plan, the committee was formed, and we didn't discuss any funding for it, or how it would be paid for or anything, and I don't know if it's still been addressed, but these committees kind of take action, and I don't know if it's an afterthought, but just something that we might need to have a discussion on, or, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is on that. WSB plays a large role, from both the engineering aspect as well as the planning aspect, so it's something that we will have to discuss.
You're talking on all these, or just?
The Downtown Design Guidelines, specifically.
I would think the wayfinding plan as well, you know, at some point in time, we have these grand designs for where public signage would be, and then at some point we would want to talk about the funding source for that, and how we're going to implement it.
Well, the one thing, you know, we briefly, obviously, talked about the work plan, but when we talked about the Downtown Design Guide, we haven't, I think Lisa sent all of us a copy of it, so we can kind of go through it, and just to see if there's some way that it can be redone, that wouldn't require a huge project to get it done, because there's a lot of good information on there, it's just, the conflicts that arise is because, at least the ones I found, is because it's specific to prior code. And when you reference the existing code with a particular standard, and then that standard changes, now you're immediately inconsistent. So that's still, we haven't, like I say, really dug into that, but I guess maybe in the next month or so, we can all, the Planning Commission members, and kind of get a sense of if we, if what we think might be workable wouldn't require a huge amount of effort, just to address that, you know, for one plan, potentially.
The next item on the agenda is the former Lilly Building, give me a second to share my screen. Oh, disabled share, you cannot share screen.
You can do that.
Oh, you're still sharing, somebody else is still sharing.
We're all sharing a picture of Lisa, hold on, there we go.
Just to remind us she's here. So just a, kind of a brief update on the Lilly property, I can't really speak to the historic nature of the Lilly property, I'm going to tell you what I know has happened since January, so that'll be the starting place. Since January, there have been development interests in the property, the property has been on the market for sale. As of March 8th, two development teams made formal proposals to both the EDA, and then a joint workshop of the City Council, along with the chairs and vice-chairs of the EDA and Planning Commission, so a lot of you have already seen this. And what they have, it's a five-story, well, it's initially shown as a five-story proposal for a project that they are thinking is in the $25 to $30 million range. The, I'm sorry, wrong proposal. The unit count, so they're proposing a, like I said, four to four, four to five-story residential property with somewhere in the neighborhood of 88 units of housing, that was at a five-story proposal, so I've shared with them, you know, that five stories might be an uphill battle, so I think they're looking at a way to do something closer to four, or maybe four with some amenity space on the roof. So I suspect that would go down from the 88 units. They are also talking about, and I can go to the site plan, that's more helpful, and I know this is really small for folks to look at, but this is the first floor, which shows on the back what we call podium parking, so that's at-grade parking. This would also have underground parking beneath it, that's not shown on the site plan. And then, if you look kind of the greenish property, or the greenest spaces on the two ends, on the left, that's commercial property, a couple of commercial bays, about 1,200 square feet, and on the right, that's, it's shown as common space, about 2,500 square feet, so, you know, that would be workout facilities for tenants, or, you know, clubrooms or that kind of thing. And then they're showing four live-work units at the ground floor, and if people are familiar, or if people aren't familiar with live-work units, you know, typically it's a small business, a one or two-person business, where the person running the business would also live in the unit, and so on the front, you know, the front third of it, or the front quarter of it, you might have a conference room, if you're an insurance agent, that you'd be able to talk to your clients, and then the back two-thirds or three-quarters is a living space. You also hear this a lot of times with artists, that it's a type of housing they use. I will tell you, I've been around real estate development kinds of things for about 30 years now, and I think I probably had at least a dozen proposals that started out with live-work units, I've never seen one built, for whatever reason, I'm hoping that this happens, because I think it's, it could be really interesting. I think they mentioned building them in a way that could be converted back to solely residential, so that if they didn't find people willing to do that. And then the upper floors, you know, it's just a lot of units there, they're talking about a mix from studio to one-bedroom to two-bedroom, two-bedroom would be the largest, they would not have three. And then in the renderings that they've given us, these are not their proposal, these are other buildings, whether they've built them, or their architect has designed them, or buildings that perhaps they don't even have anything to do with, just to give some concepts, some ideas of what it could look like. So that was March 8th that this was presented to policymakers, and then on March 22nd, the EDA met, got some more information on the, you know, the financial aspect of each proposal, and so really, I'm just showing you the preferred developer, there was another proposal that was not chosen. The developer did enter into purchase agreement with the Lilly representatives on April 6th, and then on April 12th, the EDA approved what's called a memorandum of understanding with the developers, kind of laying out who's going to do what, they're going to reimburse us for some costs we've already incurred, we are going to give them what's called an exclusive rights agreement, which means we're not going to talk to other developers about helping them financially. Some of the things we are going to do is look into financial assistance, they've indicated that they would likely need some financial assistance because of the costs of, you know, acquiring a developed site, you know, the environmental costs, the demolition costs, the cost of doing structured parking, those types of things, so they've indicated us that they would probably need, almost certainly need, some financial assistance, so we were committed to spending the time and effort trying to determine the amount of financial assistance that we could generate to help them. So some next steps, this week, later this week, the development team and myself and Brandy, the city planner, will be meeting to talk about, you know, land use issues, planning and zoning issues, you know, what the, what the current zoning is, what some constraints are, what they would need to do in terms of a process through planning and zoning. And then next week, the development team is going to meet with our public finance consultants at Baker Tilly to start talking about tax increment financing or other tools. The developer had said that they have a purchase agreement on the site, that purchase agreement has a lot of contingencies, and one of the contingencies is that they conclude that environmentally it's something that's feasible to do, and so if people drive by there, they might see, you know, like drilling rigs out there doing samples of the parking lot on the ground and things, and I'm sure that people are inside looking for asbestos and other materials, so that due diligence is occurring. We, in the memorandum of understanding, I'm just going to say MOU, we required them to hold a community meeting to get input from residents on, you know, things like height, or design, or, you know, any of the kind of architectural, or, you know, other development things, so, you know, I'm hoping that would happen soon. I'm a big fan of those kinds of meetings, it's amazing when you get a group of residents together, they can come up with some great ideas that the development team and staff had never thought of. By the end of the year, we plan to have a development agreement, which is kind of one step further than the MOU, which starts to say, you know, if you build this many square feet and this many units, then we will provide you with tax increment financing, or we will do this, you will do that, so a contract that lays out both parties' obligations. And in the MOU, we're required to do that by December, I think it's going to go faster than that, I'd like to be having that discussion more like August, September, October. And then, depending on how that timing goes, they would like to be demolishing the building and commencing construction no later than, you know, when the ground thaws out next spring. So, you know, a year from now, we could see, you know, cranes out there putting up a building, so it's pretty exciting. If people had questions about that, the members of the EDA are pretty knowledgeable about what's going on there, so between myself and them, we might be able to answer them.
I was just curious, is that property already in a tax increment financing district?
No, it's, it's, it's in our redevelopment project area, which essentially is the majority of the city, but it's not in a TIF district.
Really exciting, I'm glad to see that things are moving along there, and it's exactly the type of project that I think is needed, and so it's really good to see that. I'll be excited to see some aesthetics, and see what they're actually proposing, and I'm looking forward to that, thank you.
Yeah, the architecture firm that they're working with, I've seen their other work, and they do really good work, so I think people will be excited, and I'm glad to hear how excited you are, and there are a lot of, there is a lot of development interest in the city of North St. Paul, so I get calls every day from developers, and I suspect that the Lilly property won't be the last development proposal I'm talking to you about in the near future.
Could I ask another, or just make a comment, and that had to do with the live-work thing, you know, that use, that is a downtown use now? The concept of, you know, not knowing if it's going to be workable or not, and potentially, you know, during the, during the work, they could decide they wanted it to just be apartments instead, is there the possibility of having it be just small business locations as well? I mean, was that one of the options you, that's been contemplated?
You know, I don't think they're, I don't think they're so far along in their planning that they have made that decision, I think the neighborhood plan or the community meeting, sorry, will inform a lot of that, when they hear from people, what they're hoping to see downtown, and...
Okay.
I mean, I even mentioned a restaurant, or not a restaurant, but a grocery store, you know?
Well, I was just thinking, you know, we have a lot of small, and small business space is not all that easy, you know, to find, and that's what we have a lot of, so it was just one of those things that popped into my head when you said it couldn't be converted to apartments, I thought, could it be converted to little businesses?
Any other questions on the Lilly Building? Not Seventh Street?
Okay, so I think that Don Jensen's going to take this one on, but I'm going to share my screen.
I was actually going to say John do it, but no, I'd love to see Don do it.
Well, John can put his two cents worth, and that's, that's fine. 2579 Seventh Street is the open lot between Sidewinders and the Tattoo Parlor on the north side of Seventh, east of Margaret. It's being, it's a demolished, demolished building, and it's being used as a parking lot right now. One of the things that we've been talking about is the fact that we're looking for some type of possible green space, even if it's only temporary. type of possible green space, even if it's only temporary. We still want to develop the property. And Lisa, would it be possible for you to put up the?
I'm trying to share it.
Okay.
It looks like it's being shared to me, but I'm not seeing it on the screen. Should I stop sharing?
There we go.
That's mine, I think.
Okay. This is the proposal that the EDA came up with. We will take out the two curb cuts on Seventh and only have access to the parking lot through Sepulveda. Use the front side, that's pretty much where the plaza is, where the car show and a lot of the trucks park. That's the largest portion of the sidewalk that's available. It has the most depth. We will actually gain one or two extra parking lots on, parking spots on Seventh by taking out the driveways. We don't have people driving through the sidewalk then. The EDA felt that was a, a better option, and then one-way traffic through the parking lot. Green space is about half the, half the area, and we get 14 parking places plus whatever we get on Seventh. One of the things that we've talked about today, we're tabling this situation, or this proposal right now. Is it, it's WSB, came up with a plan and costs that are involved in trying to work this up, and the total cost is about $75,000, most of which is pavement removals is $15,000, earthwork is $13,000, and asphalt and painting of the parking lot is $25,000. $6,000 for concrete walks, $9,000 for the picnic tables and bench, and then another $7,500 for, to make the front portion of that space green. And we just felt Tom Schiffsky on the EDA basically said the engineers are about 25 to 30, 33% off on their estimates of costs these days. So, we're going to get a firmer idea. $75,000 made everybody choke a little bit, especially if it's temporary.
Are they off too high or too low?
They're too high. Or, no, the engineerings are too low. Yes, I'm sorry.
Right, right, okay.
But there's also stuff that we can do on the city side that might be able to offset some of this cost. Right now, it's having this be done by somebody.
Yeah, that, but the, one of the things that we were discussing is that the city maintenance department has other things to do that that might get, so we'll end up with half-completed projects. So, there's a little bit of discussion that still needs to go on, on this. And, you know, we, we all like the idea. $75,000 is too much, and if it goes to $100,000 or $110,000, that's, like I said, for a temporary space, that might be a bridge too far. So, that's, anybody, any other questions?
Well, since you keep saying temporary, I'll ask the obvious question. Any thought of making it permanent? As a permanent open space?
So, I think the EDA is looking at this being a potential development site.
No, I know, I'm just asking.
We haven't, no, we haven't really thought of it, making it permanent, although this could be 10, 10 years out, you know? So, to me, what's permanent? More than a year, more than two years? So, yes, I would say this could be longer term than a short-term fix.
Oh, yeah, you can't predict.
Right. And that's the hardest part about development, especially, this is kind of a unique piece of property. I think it's going to take a little more, a little more creativity for this, for this lot. And, like you say, this fits our need right now, you know? It's parking and also a little green space that we potentially could use downtown.
One of the things they brought up in our EDA meeting today was the fact that we're not sure how the building was demolished and if the basement was cracked. There is some belief that it was just piled in and filled, and if the floor wasn't cracked, it's basically a large swimming pool underneath. So, there is, there is some concern. So, we, there might be some additional costs to, to check or to drill through to make it pervious, so...
We did not talk about a swimming pool.
No.
It's not going to be a swimming pool.
No, definitely not. Not, go ahead.
I was just wondering, and obviously, you'll need to determine as to whether there is a existing basement or some other hole waiting underneath, but is there a possibility that the park portion could be done as like a public project, like, you know, calling all North St. Paul residents, bring your shovel and pick and help us transform this area into a park? Or, it could be maybe something, you know, to do with the service organizations or the high school or the scouts or something like that? This is a way of saving some money.
So, right now, it's pervious pavement on top, all of this. So, we would have to get that off. And then, you're saying after that, then turn it into a, yeah, we've done, we've done parks that way. We've done, build our, community build playground equipment. Why not? Possibility.
If it could save $10,000 or $15,000 in cost.
Right.
You know, and it would give everybody a, a feeling of, you know, goodwill for having done this.
Sure. Yeah, right, just the green space.
Right, yeah, obviously not the, the parking area.
Right.
I think all the, all the moves are really good. I mean, getting rid of the curb cuts on Seventh is perfect because even if you do want to develop it later, you, you wouldn't really want car access there anyway. So, and it would be great to have even, you know, just a couple of years to have green space there. I mean, when we had the short-lived green space where the new apartment is now, that was great. My kids were running around there every Friday night, and it gave a whole new, you know, public space to hang out in for the car shows. So, I think this could be really a great spot, especially with the food trucks, and I mean, it would be, it would be awesome. So, I think if we can do it, it would be, be great.
Even one of the designs for the parking lot was a food truck placement up to the green space. So, people coming off the sidewalk and go in the green space and grab their food and have a little picnic in the green space.
That'd be great.
Cool. But we tabled it.
Yes. We need to do a little bit more investigation.
Do a little more work, a little more work on it.
I think we're on to staff, reports from staff.
Reports from staff.
So, I, I really only have one report to give, and that is, you know, as recently as, I believe, 2019, the city of North St. Paul had both a community development director and a community services director that really were in charge of, among other things, the planning commission, the EDA, and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and neither of those positions exist today. So, I went to the, the city council in March, talked to them about that, and they approved adding a community development director position into the complement of city staff. And so, we are now, we're posting for that position now. The posting closes on Friday, and that's a, a position that would do a lot of staffing for both of these bodies. So, I'm hopeful that we're going to get a great applicant and get you some more resources to help get your great work done. And that's all I have to report.
Reports from Council A is on, we have, Lisa, you got anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't think I have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole.
I have nothing at this time.
Report?
Don did a phenomenal job.
I would just like to add or give you an update in regards to, we had our business association meeting today. We had the, a group, the group from Trident, which is the anchor block development, the apartment buildings, and they have just received their occupancy certificate. So, they will start renting it out. The management team that, that is down there is phenomenal. I was really impressed with it. They have over 200 people on waiting list already. There's only 128 units, I believe. So, 200, it sounds like a high number, but these could have been months ago through their name on, and, you know, they found places to live. But, it just tells you that people are really looking and very interested in that, in that spot. Update on the restaurant that should be open June 24th, a soft opening. They plan on be opening for a few days to, to try to get all the kinks out. So, they're going to have some people, the public, going in, but it won't be open to the public, just to do kind of a soft opening. So, it's probably going to be staff from city here.
Planning commissioners.
Planning commission. I think we'll open it up, or I'll, I'll talk to them, try to open it up for all, all city staff or whatever. But then, they plan on being open probably the following week, so, or late part of June. The Sentinel Building, they told me it's over 80% rented now, and they are cash flowing. So, they're very happy with it, very happy with it. That's my update, exciting updates for, for the downtown and for the anchor block site. Reports from commissioners, anything?
I don't have any report, but I do have a question. Well, I have two questions. One was on the apartments, the 200 folks. Do you know if the affordable units are, have a waiting list?
Yes, so they, they said that's usually the first thing that fills up. And she told me that it's between 20 and 25% that's going to be affordable.
Yeah, I remember that. That's why I wondered, because I think those are the first we, I recall us even having in a project, so it's, that's good.
They think that those will go the fastest.
Okay. And what, do you have any information about Zanies? I just found that out today because I went in to ask a question, and I saw the little, there was a grand opening card down where the coffee loft used to be?
I know nothing about it.
Oh, okay, it's a chicken.
It's a chicken?
Chicken place. Do you have it, do you anything?
No, I heard about it for the first time today, so I'm not sure, you know, you would, I would think that they...
We're usually the last to know.
...some business license and some building permits.
That's really interesting because I picked up a card at the planning desk on Thursday that announced their grand opening.
That's what I picked up this morning when I came in, and I thought, oh, I haven't heard anything about this. So, you don't, okay, well, the cards are downstairs.
They must have, they must have dropped off some cards. We weren't aware of that. The only communication that, as far as I know, that the city had, they called to inquire, I think it was an inspection that they needed. Apparently, there was a restaurant in there previously, so there wasn't any licenses or permits that were required, and they were able to just, as far as I know.
I would assume they would need a food license.
Well, yes, but they work through the, the county.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, that's with the state or county or, so it's not, it's not with the city, so that's why we haven't had involvement.
Well, anyway, it's down there, and they have, I think it was the, I can't remember, it was a soft opening or the grand opening on the 14th, which is this coming Saturday. So, I just, but I'd mention it, it's another place to get some food.
I think that must be a grand opening because I'm pretty sure I saw something on Facebook that said they're open already.
Okay, maybe they already had their soft opening then, okay.
But I think they're, they're open, I want to say Tuesday through Saturday. I think I noticed they're closed on Sunday and Monday.
Okay. Anyway, I, something to check out?
Yeah, yeah.
That's my report.
That's great, great. Anything from Patrick? Got anything?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Rick?
Nothing from me either.
Andy? Cameron?
I've made my contributions.
John?
Okay, Terry, I'm sorry, I thought of another thing when you called on Rick. I happened to catch him as he arrived this evening tying up his bike to the lamppost, and I wondered, why don't we have any bike racks around City Hall? He pointed out another bike that was tied to a tree in the landscaping section next to our parking lot. So, I'm just going to point that out that...
You know, and we did have some bike racks at one point.
I thought so.
It was round, and people didn't quite understand what they were, but they were bike racks.
You should get some that people understand.
I think we still have those.
Well, it just seemed to me that, you know, we should probably have bike racks.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you all. Tim?
Tim.
Exciting things.
Oh, we could have mentioned cleanup, cleanup day on Saturday. There was some progress made.